In any case, let's go back to that wonderful recording Gilsham made of.
Hey, I would like to call the word the January 10th, 2018 meeting of the Moscow Planning and Zoning Commission and begin with a review of the minutes from December 13th. And I might add before we get going that Kurt Obermeyer is joining us in the discussion remotely through teleconference or whatever you call it. I guess telephone is not. Yes.
Can we actually do a little round of introductions? I think I know most of you, but not all of you.
We can, absolutely, yes. So I'm Wendy McClure, current Chair of the Planning and Zoning.
I'm Greg Dickerson.
Mike Ray.
And you are our new Council Representative, if I take it? Okay.
Welcome.
Rob Perry, I am Vice Chair.
I'm sorry, who are you?
Yeah, nice to meet you.
I'm Dennis Wilson, sorry.
I'm Joel Hamilton, I'm Second Vice Chair, I believe. Both a member of this commission and the Transportation Commission.
Nels Reese, longtime member, not as long as him, but longtime member of P&amp;Z, and welcome to our table.
Yes, welcome. And Kurt Obermeyer is joining us from afar. And you, I think you know him. Yes, you do. So, okay, moving on with the agenda, I'd like to begin with soliciting a motion for approval of minutes from December 13th unless anybody has any additions, corrections, deletions. Everybody had a chance to?
The twine we saw.
Okay.
Make a motion when we accept the minutes.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstain.
Okay, Dennis abstains. Okay, item two, correspondence. Mike, is there any correspondence from staff?
Nothing from staff, no.
From staff. And all I will say is I've received a few emails about tiny homes from Nels Peterson as maybe a possible future consideration for discussion in our commission, so. All right, Transportation Commission meeting report, Joel.
That's easy. The Transportation Commission meeting is for tomorrow is been canceled because we're attending the open house in this room from 5:30 to 7:30 on the Third Street Corridor Plan, which we see laid out outside the door there, so.
And I might add to what you just said that there's also an additional open house on January 18th for people who here or who might be listening.
It's also in the same room, also from 5:30 to 7:30. So it's a good chance for people to see what is being proposed for the entire Third Street Corridor and a chance for feedback.
But if you can't make it, it's open. And anytime the Third Street Gallery is open, so.
And if you can't make it physically, you can go virtually online and download the PDFs if you have a good Internet connection and you can look at them page by page and compare them that way. That's another.
And there is also a place on the Internet for feedback.
Right, so multiple ways to get involved on that one. Okay, so any other comments on transportation? We're going to be talking about it in more depth at the, okay. So, item four, public comment. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak to the commission regarding items that aren't currently before us or, and Nels, do you have anything that you want to add to this discussion? Okay, well, with no one else from the public in attendance, I think, just for those of you who might be listening, that's an opportunity for you to participate. Okay, now we move to item five, election of our 2018 officers, including Chair, Vice Chair, and Second Vice Chair. And so I guess I'll begin by soliciting nominations for Chair.
Madam Chair, if I might, I have appreciated your leadership these last two terms, and if you're willing to serve another term, I would be very pleased to nominate you for another term as Chair of the Commission.
Well, thank you for the support. Yes, I would accept that nomination.
All I've got to do is get a second.
If it requires a second, I will do that.
Okay, are there other nominations for position? Are you sure? Okay, so I guess we'll vote on it, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? All abstain. Okay, now nominations for Vice Chair.
Rob, are you willing to continue to serve?
And if I'm allowed a second, I'll say.
You're the Chair now.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I should ask, are there any other nominations? Yeah, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
All abstain.
And abstentions? Okay, and we heard an aye coming from.
You're lame, you're in Arizona.
Okay, now nominations for Second Vice Chair.
Nominate Joel.
Hi, Second Chair.
Any other nominations?
It's a job without a great deal of responsibility. Except when they're gone.
Well, you do have one other responsibility that usually falls on the Chair that came to my attention and I didn't know it until I was reading bylaws or code or whatever, which is that you, usually the Chair of P&amp;Z is the official representative to the Transportation Commission, but you've been filling that role. Yeah, so I didn't know that that was a responsibility, but.
I guess I didn't know that was an ex-official responsibility, but.
Yeah, yeah, well, so you have a double duty, I guess, if you can vote. Yeah, in my case, I have another commission that meets at the same time as Transportation anyway, but, so, we didn't vote yet. Are there any other nominations? Nope. Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
All abstain.
Okay, so all of the elected officials abstained just from voting, so. All right, thank you for the support and for the team, so. And I'll start by saying I'll be calling in for the next two meetings from California, so you're going to be in charge, but I want to.
Make sure you give us a good number.
Yeah, I will. Okay, so now we go to item six, which is the 2009 Comprehensive Plan Updates and Commission Recommendations.
Okay, so if you recall at our last meeting, we went through Sustainable Environment Commission's recommendations as far as integrating climate change preparedness into our comprehensive plan. I think it was the commission's direction at that time that staff go through and not really change the wording, but make the wording consistent with the comprehensive plan. And so that's what I've attempted to do between last meeting and now. And so I've got kind of integrated into the portion of the comp plan where Sustainable Environment Commission had intended it to go. And for those of you that couldn't make the last meeting, I'll kind of set the context to where they proposed to have this located, some of the natural resources, chapter of the comp plan, which is chapter one. We go through kind of the, setting the context for Moscow, vegetation, wildlife, soils, minerals, water, climate, and air quality. And then we go through some hazardous areas, what are hazards in the region in Moscow. We don't have very many. We've got some steeper topography in certain areas. We've got a couple of watersheds, so we have floodplain issues. And then we have relatively low seismic rating here, and so that's not really of too much of a concern. And the Sustainable Environment Commission had recommended right after these two sections that we add a new section called Local Response to Changing Global Climate Conditions. And so that's what you see, I've got it attached to your packet here, that section. And then I just go through, you know, they kind of had recommendations as far as sections within that main parent section of water, air quality, energy usage, transportation, infrastructure, environmental impacts, climate migration, food security, and public health and affordable housing. And so I've got, you know, pretty much our revised language on the screen. The majority of what we had seen last time is included in this introductory statement, so haven't changed that a whole lot, kind of set the context in the very beginning by citing the American Planning Association. So that was, you know, one change that we had done within that section. And then, as you recall before, there was some correspondent, private correspondence from, I think it was Mark Solomon at the university about what we're going to experience or predictions, what we're going to experience in the future. I had gone out and the White House puts out, or the federal government puts out a climate change document every three, four years. And I had, I don't cite it here, but I was planning on adding a citation at the bottom about that document. And you can go online and download it. It's rather large, but it goes through, you know, a whole lot of really specific detail and it's broken down into specific regions of the United States. And we're in the Northwest Region, and that includes Oregon, Washington, and Idaho. And so a lot of the findings are pretty consistent with what Dr. Solomon was included within the document. Just thought it'd be better, instead of private communication, to include, you know, a citation from, especially from the White House. So that's what I've, you know, kind of done in this section. Water, you know, I won't read through the whole thing, mainly just kind of changed some of the wording, set the tone with the two aquifers that we rely on for our primary water source in Moscow, added some projections that we had in previous chapters about population by 2030, looked at conditions in other regions as far as population, maybe influx to this region through climate migration, increased water consumption due to that population growth, as well as our declining aquifers. We've got a little bit lower precipitation in the summer due to increased temperatures, so I think the prediction by 2080, we're supposed to have a five to eight degree temperature increase throughout the region, and so.
You didn't include a date for that temperature rise. I was thinking that including a date in, or a nearby sentence would be a good idea.
Okay. And so, you know, what they're predicting is that, you know, it's going to be warmer in the winter as well as the summer, and then that's going to affect our runoff. And so there could be a higher likelihood for flooding when you have maybe less snowpack, it recedes earlier in the springtime, it could lead to more drought conditions in the summertime because of that early melt-off. And that was what essentially the report by the feds had said, as well as Dr. Solomon as well. So really just, you know, the only change there is converting that to kind of the consistency of the language in the comp plan. The next section is air quality.
Mike, I ask you a question about the water section before you move on. Should we be adding to that some mention of the work that the Pback, Blue Space Knockover Committee has done and their search for alternative sources? Because it kind of, you're talking about the impacts on the water supply, but should, would it be appropriate, I guess, to mention that there is ongoing work to try to identify alternative sources to meet the pressure demands? I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but that I would raise the.
Well, yeah, and that's why I think that another, some other feedback that I got last time was to include citations of other sections of the comp plan. So, yeah, we have maybe 10 pages that discuss, you know, Pback and then our water goals and in-planting.
We did that when we talked about potable water. There was quite a discussion on Pback, I thought it was there.
Yeah, it's all there, that's.
That's possible, that was one of the meetings I missed.
That's why, you know, at the very end, we kind of conclude that, you know, conservation, expansion of effluent irrigation, investigation in alternate water supply among recommendations, and then discussed in that section there, so.
Which also ties into the Water Summit findings, yeah.
Okay, sorry, that's good.
Do you have a question, Joel?
I did, but I need to find it. Go ahead.
All right. The next section was air quality. So in the, you know, if we have increased runoff in the springtime and less water in the summertime, we're going to have drier forests, and that's going to lead to increase in wildfire risks and wildfires throughout the region. And so, as well as increase in diseases, so like the pine beetle habitat is shown to be expanding.
I did find it, but perhaps I'm late here. About an inch above the water heading, among their findings are, and then there's a list of basically recommendations. And I guess I was wondering whether the word findings would be better changed to recommendations? Because the things that follow are recommendations of the commission, they're not really findings.
Where, excuse, sorry.
It's on the.
Right above the heading water.
So you have to go.
Move up.
Top of the brown line.
Bottom of the first page.
Four lines up.
Okay. I got hung up on that, too. I think that's a good recommendation to, I read through.
Come on down a little bit from where you are now.
Yeah, so we're, you're talking about right here?
Yes.
Yeah.
And so what would you propose to?
Among the recommendations are, rather than findings.
Does each one of those things do this, do that, do something?
Sure. No, I got hung up on that, read it four times before.
Good lord. Would it be sharp?
Yeah, that's a change.
While you're back that far, the second sentence of the very beginning, this is my government hang-up, could, after you have reduced greenhouse gas emissions, and then in the next sentence or the couple after that, you have GHG, could you put behind greenhouse gas emissions in the second session before the period, GHG?
Yeah, that would be good.
I think it will help the reading.
Sure.
Sorry.
Yeah. I stumbled over that, too.
So with the increased wildfire risk in the summertime, we're probably going to be adversely affected by just air quality through, I mean, we already experienced that every year with regional fires and even some that are outside of our region adversely affecting the air quality. So that's likely to continue. Our ability to influence that is not very great since they occur in other regions, but there are some, you know, some recommendations at the bottom, you know, keep on with our Tree City USA, urban forests, reduce carbon emissions, and explore alternatives to outdoor activities that would provide additional options during negative air quality events.
Is it worthwhile adding a sentence in there saying that Moscow is not particularly flammable itself for an outsider reading it?
Yeah, we could, you know, maybe refer back to the hazard section before this, that it's, you know, wildfires aren't really identified as a hazard, mainly just because we have agricultural fields around it that burn, you know, they end up.
We'd usually expect a grain stubble fire if it probably stopped at the edge of the field, but.
The next is energy usage. So we have our current plan of reducing 20% by 2020. That's 20% below a 2005 baseline, and so that plan will hit its sunset in 2020. And then upon completion of that goal in 2020, city should explore expanding the effort to further reduce carbon emissions and fossil fuel consumption. I think that previously Sustainable Environment had a goal towards going to net zero. I think that's probably, you know, the community and the councils prerogative, and so we had just kept it general to say that, you know, we're just, city should keep on looking at furthering efforts, and maybe that is going to carbon neutrality. But keeping it general here in the comp plan, so that was the change I made there. And then city could also explore incentives for citizens, businesses, University of Idaho to reduce their carbon emissions, reworded that a little bit, and then kind of tied that, we currently have our rebates and incentives for water conservation, you know, could be similar to those types of incentives for the, you know, university businesses and the public.
The only thing that's a little bit confusing is the city. I mean, because we, you qualify it in one, you know, a couple sentences, down the city could also explore incentives for citizens, businesses. So is the goal the city of Moscow government implementing a 20%? You see what I mean?
Yeah, and that's what we do.
So, so we're talking about the city in two different ways, and so that's a little bit confusing, is all I, is there a way we could sort of, Moscow city government is currently implementing, or the city, something, institutionally versus what makes up the city? That's where I find it a little bit confusing.
Yeah. City government?
Yeah.
Well, in both cases, we still.
You have the same aspirations, but.
Yeah.
But it's specifically a goal for the city government, or is it more inclusive?
Well, I mean, the first one's city government, the, you know, the second one's still city government, it's just for the citizens, you know, right? It's the city program that the city implements for the benefit of the citizens. You know, I mean, it'd be, I guess, for, you know, the first one would be for the benefit of the city as well as the citizens in carbon emissions and the region in the United States. I mean, I could try to distinguish between the two.
Well, it's capitalized. It is the entity. It is the.
In both cases?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay. I wondered when I read it, because I wasn't sure which one you meant, so.
Would it be, would it clarify it to, in the first sentence, say the city government is currently implementing?
Or city government has committed to.
Their own goal?
Yeah.
So.
And to be more general later in the paragraph?
Right.
Okay.
I still think it begs the question if, even if you say city government, are you talking about implementing an ordinance that's citywide? Could you clarify by saying the city is currently implementing 24 city operations?
Right, that would be.
Okay.
To redo, a goal of reducing, so it's specific to what the city.
Because I would imagine finding more fuel-efficient snowplows or whatever, or whatever, you know, practices, et cetera.
Okay.
Would be.
Yeah, that works.
Okay.
And then we go on further in that section, you know, just explaining that individuals or businesses may desire to implement onsite solar, electric, or solar thermal, or small-scale wind systems. Might be a desire to create a co-op or their community energy production systems that may require new permitting schemes. So just thinking about, you know, there could be barriers in our current zoning code to some of these things. And so we just added a statement at the end, city should identify these barriers, you know, in order to try to make those achievable, and then promote the use of fossil fuel alternatives. So added that sentence at the end. Transportation, this is, most of this is pretty similar to what Sustainable Environment. I don't think I changed really a whole lot within this section. I did, you know, talks about smart transit, increasing the fixed route, the network, dial a ride. It's a community-desired outcome. And then continue to expand bicycle pedestrian transportation network through a complete streets approach, so we've adopted that through the city and Transportation Commission, tried to incorporate that into new development. And I was thinking about new development as well as infill development, and, you know, I originally was going to put maybe infill development, but infill development's really new development as well, so I just kept it simple to just new development. City should work with the University of Idaho to research feasibility developing a bike-share program initially focused on stations located at campus and downtown. I know that the university's currently looking at that, and they have had some, I think, discussions with the city about, you know, a startup bike-share program, you know, mainly between the U of I and downtown. So added that in there. Electric vehicles, Sustainable Environment had recommended before, and their charging station are also an emerging trend. City could partner with Avista, you know, looking at strategic locations, you know, good location would be downtown Jackson Street parking lot near the bathrooms, maybe, you know, provides the opportunity to park and charge if you're going on a longer trip, and then also provide some economic stimulus to downtown while you're there. Mixed-use development subsidies can also provide shorter distances to critical services and promote the use of non-motorized transportation. Transportation goals and objectives are discussed in more detail in Chapter Three, Community Mobility. So we really go into a whole lot of detail on a lot of these things within that chapter, so just kind of referencing that. Infrastructure and environmental impacts, talking about, you know, some of the things that we've done over the last, you know, five, 10 years as far as zoning code amendments to allow greater flexibility in setbacks, more mixed-use development by right, so our ordinance that allowed residential in most of the commercial zones, more opportunities for infill, higher density close to the city core, discuss our parking requirements that were revised in 2017 to allow reduced areas of impervious surface, greater areas of green space to manage and filter stormwater runoff, had incentives for incorporating bike parking, and easier opportunities for shared parking arrangements. So that all affects our infrastructure and environmental impacts positively. And the city should continue to support opportunities to incorporate higher density where appropriate, different housing options like townhouses, twin homes, smaller homes, managing stormwater runoff is federally mandated, so we'll have, you know, the, our EPA Phase Two, which hopefully will be implemented sometime in the near future. They've been talking about it probably for the last 10 years. So that'll probably likely come down within the next few years for mitigating stream flooding impacts, will maintain property values and retain more moisture in soils, as well as reduce impacts on city wastewater treatment and recovery systems. So I think that largely was a carryover from Sustainable Environment's recommendation there. And then climate migration, you know, the White House reports looking at a lot of these other regions, and it's mainly coastal regions, with sea level rise that could have a negative impact upon those areas and cause an outward migration from those regions to other regions that are less adversely affected by climate change. And so that's really what the climate migration is referencing or referring to. And then just speculating as, you know, it could occur slowly, it could become sudden, just those repercussions of that, increasing demand for jobs, housing, resources, and services, and then planning for that growth either normally or made more urgent by potential of climate migration, which could bring an increased burden to support economic opportunities, infrastructure, and city services. And then the last one was food security. And this is largely, I think, what the Sustainable Environment Commission had recommended. So they had identified kind of two challenges. Remote weather events could impact production and prices, and local weather events could impede the supply of the food to the marketplace. Locally-produced distribution food could address some of these concerns, both via farmers' market, individual urban agricultural efforts. Kind of this, I think we had inserted this, about the growing trend of local food establishments. We have the successful downtown co-op, local restaurant. We have the successful downtown co-op, local restaurants, a variety of food vendors at the farmers' market. And then we talk about our urban agricultural ordinance that we passed in 2013 that essentially allowed agricultural activities throughout the whole city and even in residential zones. So then we just go on to say, you know, continue to support a local food production can increase access to healthy food options, reduce environmental impacts of the transportation to get the food to the location, and also increase food security and affordability in the community. So that was our, that was it. So that was our attempt to, you know, try to make it consistent with the comp plan and still retain most of the Sustainable Environment Commission's recommendations, so.
I was happy with it.
Well, I'm impressed.
Yeah, I am too. You distilled it, you know, I think, and made it more conforming to the rest of the plan in language.
Any other questions coming?
No, good job.
Okay.
So do you need any further direction from us or just?
I think I was just going to quickly go through, I think, the other part.
Oh, right.
Of the Sustainable Environment Commission, and I didn't change this at all, I just put it in, and it's not in your packet, I had done this earlier today, but just put it in the format of the comp plan just to show, you know, how that was going to be inserted. But it was mainly had to do with pollinator habitats, so we have this section that discusses riparian and wetland habitats, just as part of the natural and urban environment and just all the benefits that they provide. And Sustainable Environment was just proposing to add pollinator habitats onto that as well and kind of define that, you know, as pollinator habitats focus on pollinator-friendly plants, flowers, ground areas that promote transit corridors, and pesticide-safe islands and borders in an urban environment which are further useful for accessing rural agricultural And then it just didn't change anything else in that section. And then at the very end, we have some objectives, so we have our goals, objectives, and implementation actions. And this is, kind of goes back to what we were just looking at as far as the climate change section. So they'd be proposing to add a subsection underneath the objectives to incorporate a proactive response to potential local and regional effects of changing climate conditions on natural resources and their impacts on socio-economic factors.
Nels, did you have a question or no?
And that would be wrapping up the Sustainable Environment Commission's recommendations.
I'm just thinking how sublime it is in, while we don't have much growth and we are not very rich, if you, if you're a big city with lots of industry, you don't make these same decisions as quickly without repercussions, you know? You think of our, our small towns that are kind of benign as opposed to incorporate America wants, they may not be as ready to make moves. I'm just thinking of how nice it is to live in a place like Moscow, if you don't mind not having any money. It's good, Michael.
Yeah, yeah.
The next portion of this is tree commission's recommendations and I might get myself off the hook and invite Nels up since she's in the.
You pushed her to the right, I'm sorry.
I've, so they have some recommendations, I included in an email, and I've gone ahead and inserted this under the street trees section within the comp plan. We had some sections that, that we had previously developed or revised our street tree planning program and taken quite a bit of this paragraph out. And they had just, I think, proposed to add maybe a sentence or two onto the beginning. So we, we talk about, you know, the importance of street trees to the community and, you know, go on to say tree lawns provide separation of pedestrians from passing automobiles as well as location for the storage of snow away from the sidewalk during winter months. And this is the, what they're proposing to add was, however, in many neighborhoods in the downtown business district, the city's right-of-way street trees are aging and under additional stress from increased temperatures and drier conditions. The threat of invasive and destructive insect and disease pests has increased as these species begin to migrate to our warming region. The rate of tree mortality along Moscow's streets is increasing. And then this was what we had previously inserted about the revised street tree planning program. So that, that's what we had previously. They would just be adding those three sentences to the beginning of that. And then there was a, so we had some implementation actions previously, and we were just proposing to strike all of these, but they had come up with some new implementations in order to, you know, keep the street tree advancing. So actively promote and protect, and actively promote the protection and expansion of the city's urban forest by increasing the species diversity of right-of-way tree planting efforts through publications, educational venues, and partnerships with local tree nurseries. B, developing a systematic program for education, attentive monitoring, and active enforcement of existing ordinances concerning the removal and replanting of right-of-way trees. And C, inventorying the condition and vigor of the downtown business district right-of-way trees and determining a complete life cycle and replacement plan that would consider methods of improving conditions for existing trees.
I have a Part D that I would like to suggest, which is to encourage utility companies to consolidate lines to one side of the street. As you see all this effort to save these trees that they butcher, and in some cases we have redundant lines on both sides in the areas where the trees are the most mature and trying to get them to re, as they work on lines, get them to consolidate to one side at least keeps the urban forest healthy on the other side. Or down alleys when they can, but, you know. The canopies are the best where the utility lines run down the alleys. They're the healthiest, and they're the least healthy where they run down both sides of the street.
Do they run down the alleys in, in, in Fort Russell?
Yep. Yeah, no. It's sort of a mixed bag. But if you, if you go around and look at the healthiest tree canopies, they're going to be the utility, run down the alleys.
Sure.
So.
In the future, the healthiest will be where they're buried the utilities.
Well, yeah, that would be really nice, but.
Well, which is, which is current policy.
That's our current agreement, any new development, you know.
But where they can consolidate to one side of the street, it would be nice if they would work on that.
Everybody's happy with that?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then the tree commission had a number of recommendations, not really specific areas to insert some of these recommendations, but more of just trying to convince planning and zoning to insert them somewhere in the comprehensive plan. So I could just go through these, but I haven't really gone through and taken a look at what areas they would fit within in the comp plan. So I can, I think probably the best thing to do is go back and take some time to go through and, and come back with where they would, you know, fit within the comprehensive plan. We can go through them. They're talking about forest diversity here. City should continue efforts to diversify its forests, public and private, tree diversity's best mechanism to make the urban forest more resilient to weather extremes and disease, insect pests. So, you know, talking about diversity, if you have one species of tree and you come in with a pine beetle and it gets all wiped out, then you don't, you're left with no trees. You diversify and you have, you know, less susceptible to diseases and insects that are coming in to destroy them. So trees with characteristics that include drought tolerance and insect-disease resistance will perform the best. An increased awareness of invasive and destructive pests that can migrate to our warming region will be needed. This one's about cooling heat islands, protecting asphalt. City should review its street and parking lot design guidelines to enhance the amount of shade provided on all paved areas. They probably say that since we just recently did this, last, you know, 2017, and I think we were originally going for maybe more parking lot trees, we ended up compromising with the subcommittee that was developed, or we ended up compromising for the subcommittee since they couldn't arrive at kind of a universal recommendation as far as the, you know, frequency of trees and islands that, you know, we just recently revised that. So I don't know if we should include that to look at it again since it's pretty much brand-new, but.
Well, since I was on that, as was.
I was too.
Wendy, and you, of course. I know we just did it.
Yeah.
Stormwater mitigation, city should encourage the planting of large trees as part of stormwater mitigation. Climate change is predicted to cause more rain and extreme storms in Moscow. Trees slow the impact of rain by capturing rainfall in their canopy, which can decrease stormwater surge. You know, we had left out in our parking lot standards, we were originally going to have a larger section on stormwater mitigation, but we were waiting until our Phase Two, you know, the EPA requirements come down to see what that entails for private parking lots. And so we were kind of holding off on that. We could probably look at inserting something, anticipating that coming down and, and, you know, being addressed stormwater mitigation more thoroughly in the future. And I can take a look at, you know, where that, where that would fit in the comp plan. Increased tree planting on public land. City should strive to increase total number of trees on public lands, expanding the size of urban forest can mitigate climate change impacts. Areas of public lands throughout the city should be identified for viable large tree planning efforts. Partnerships with Leito County should be sought to extend this work in the area of city impact.
There's sort of three levels of ownership that we're talking about here. And I occasionally get a little bit confused, I guess. We're talking about public land, we're talking about right-of-way, and we're talking about private land. And one, one paragraph here uses the term public land, and the following paragraph uses the term R O W. There are appropriate distinctions, I guess.
Municipal land, I would have.
There are. You know, the, the paragraph that uses the term public land is probably also talking I guess it's just something to think about as, as you're trying to get it into a proper form, as to who we're talking about.
Madam Chair.
Yes. Yeah, and why don't you just?
You could cut on the mic. When the tree commission was discussing this, that notion about public land was used trying to be the most inclusive, whether those are parks, or paths, or lands that the city owns out at the wastewater treatment that might not be right-of-ways, might not be parks, but might still be municipally owned.
Right.
And so, so it was, I think, used intentionally there to try to be the biggest umbrella it could.
Yeah.
And I'm not sure where, maybe it's the next point on the next screen where you're referring to right-of-way. But there was a different set of thoughts about the relationship of trees to right-of-way or to, to streets, trees being in right-of-ways. Amongst other things, who's in charge of planting, maintenance, and removal may differ, right? If it's in front of your house, you, the homeowner has a responsibility. If it's in a city park or somewhere else, somebody else has the responsibility.
No, there, there are legitimate distinctions, it's just we're sort of bouncing back and forth between them. Yeah.
Tree removal and replanting in the right-of-way, so this is usually in front of landowners' homes. So this is usually in the tree lawn. We have really wide right-of-ways in older areas of town, and so you may have, you know, this would still apply to that. It may not be in the tree lawn, it may be in the front yard, but it's still city property. And they would still have to go through kind of our existing process in order to get those either replaced with a new tree, you know, any type, anytime you remove a tree that's maybe diseased, you need to get a permit for removal. And then most of the time you have to replace it with another tree through our program. So, you know, this would just kind of be, you know, expanding upon that and, and, you know, citing it back to diminishes the city's forest and works against the city's goal of using trees to mitigate climate impacts for removing those trees and not, not replacing Downtown trees, so this gets to, you know, all of our trees in the downtown area, predominantly along Main Street. Developing a plan for managing those aging trees and the benefit of, you know, the treescape serving important roles, welcome shade during the summer, attracting consumers to shop at many of the retail businesses. It's a harsh environment for growing of trees with limited rooting space and increased radiant heat. Complete life cycle plan for downtown trees would consider ways to upgrade the existing forest and make it more resilient.
One thing I, I've always wondered about the downtown trees, is they're all the same variety, pretty much? And is there anything in here that we should encourage?
On Main, there were one thing, and then on the cross streets, there's something else.
But mixing them up, I mean, it's like I remember the town I grew up in had an Elm Street, and every single elm on Elm Street died. And so is there, is there some kind of sense of mixing up the varieties as their, or guidelines?
Nels, I'd like to at least enlarge that question a little bit. I'd be curious, Nels, to know the tree commission's discussion. How do you feel about downtown trees in general, just in the, the concept of downtown trees? I mean, is that a silly question? One of the things that I've noticed is that the wonderful little city of Wallace has never decided to plant a tree in its historic downtown. You know, they didn't have trees in those days and they still haven't. And one wonders whether, is it absolutely clear to the tree commission that Main Street is a much more wonderful place with trees?
So first to clarify, my term on the tree commission has ended.
Oh.
So I'm speaking to you as a private citizen with a start memory of the tree commission.
So sorry.
The, the commission is strongly committed to the idea of downtown trees and is working on, has been doing survey work downtown to try to determine the best kind of plan for a replacement strategy. And, and one of those issues is species diversity. Another is timing and sequencing and funding, you know, do you only get an opportunity? Do you do it because the tree has died to a certain point? Do you just go down the row and take them all out because they were all planted at the same? All of those issues are being wrestled with and, and the goal, I believe, the goal that we were setting last fall for this spring was to come up with a way of doing a public process to say, here's an idea of the, these are the variables, and how do we get your input on how to weigh those variables? So I think the tree commission is strongly supportive of a vibrant, viable downtown forest. With all those constraints of buildings and stuff that drops and all of the rest.
Do you think that because we're a low-lying city, we only have four or five buildings that are three stories or more, that if we had, if there was a larger, if we had taller buildings, do you think that would be the same? Yeah, and I'm just struggling with that generic sense of what you do about how trees can grow. As you see the ones that have struggled so much, you just wonder whether.
There are certainly varieties that do better, and there are certainly planting technologies that do better.
And grates.
Right, grates, or now there's some rubber things that are maybe less expensive, and you just lay over the ground, provide weed control as well.
You just wonder if like four-foot square versus six-foot square, whoa, that's a vast difference, you know, to a tree root.
Right, but you have to get the opportunity to dig that hole. And there's some new technologies to line that hole with different things to make it. Anyway, so all of those are pieces of the puzzle on how to do it. But back to your question. There's a sense that it's desirable to have spreading trees that will create a canopy that arches over. And there's been efforts to try to avoid columnar trees. We got a row of them on College, I think, when that was done. And part of it was, there was no sort of consulting process that got the Tree Commission into the loop in the design phase to have said, hey, how about a different tree than that tree? So then the other question would be, as the canyon of the city wall got taller, do you want as much darkening? Think of downtown Lewiston sometimes in the summer.
I know, I know.
And that's one of those struggles. A big-leaved tree may make it too shady, too dark.
Right, no, I think about it all the time, because I go to Lewiston quite a bit, and I feel like that downtown is just so vastly different than our, our trees sprinkle the sunlight on end of the sidewalk.
Well, they're also really close on center. I was looking at them the other day down in Lewiston, and their distance apart is much closer than ours. You know, instead of 30 or 40 feet, they're like less than 10 in some cases, you know.
But they probably wanted that down.
Yeah, they wanted an oasis.
Sure, it is, no doubt about it, but it does give the, it gives you the chance to have this discussion because it's such a different environment than, and I don't, I'm not criticizing either one, though I think.
I think they're both fit.
I like the, with our 10-degree cooler temperature, we don't need that, what they think they need.
So look for more from the Tree Commission this spring as they try to work towards how to do a process to build a plan to do the downtown tree replacement.
Thanks.
Wendy?
Yes.
As we're looking at this, I know you're struggling to kind of figure out where to incorporate. One of my thoughts is that we're, this isn't quite ready to go into comprehensive plans being, going to be pushed forward here fairly quickly. So how do we at least acknowledge that it's a work in progress without getting into probably the level of detail that we've got? I just, I guess I'm kind of acknowledging that this might be a challenge for you figuring out how to fit it into current comprehensive plan when it's still a work in progress. I mean, I think they're all great ideas. I'm not suggesting they are, but to what level of detail do you go when it's a work in progress?
Yeah, and then if there's another document that'd be better suited, like the Parks and Rec Master Plan, you know. I mean, we have a kind of an abbreviated version in the Parks and Rec chapter, and so I'd imagine that a lot of this would go in probably a Parks and Rec chapter of the comp plan. But there's a lot of overlap between the Parks and Rec Master Plan and the chapter of the comp plan, so. But I have to look through it. I'll take some time this next week and go through and see where it makes sense, you know.
So, question. Speaking that there's a preference for broader canopy trees to shield the streets. On the other hand, like on Jackson over here, we're putting in, the city's putting, is putting in columnar trees because you have the building height, and you can't have these trees going into the buildings. So how does that work out?
Yeah, I mean, a lot of times, it's just, I mean, we have a historic downtown, and, you know, one of the nice things is being able to see these nice historic buildings. And so how do you balance large canopies with, you know, more of a columnar-type tree in order to be able to see the buildings? I know Nels's pet peeve has been the trees they took out around City Hall and not being able to see that.
Yeah, for years, we haven't been able to know what the City Hall looked like. And it seemed like, you know, we, that's part of the reason that I asked the question, just to try and get a sensibility about it. I absolutely love where the trees are great, like in Fort Russell. There isn't any, there's hardly any other place in the state. A little bit Boise and Moscow have the tree canopy like we have. It's just almost idyllic. But when you think of trying to then look at our architecture, as an architect, I'm now trying to take pictures.
But our town looks like Bedford Hills at Christmas with all the lights and.
You hope for, and you really pay attention when you're a historian to the fact that, I don't know when we started planting trees, but it was quite a long time after 1900. And, you know, and so if you go back to pictures of in 1910.
But we didn't have paved streets then, and we had boardwalks for sidewalks. I mean, there were a lot of things that are historically tremendously different.
And so it's just an interesting, interesting issue. So when we took out these inner trees around the City Hall, I was actually cheering.
The next recommendation would be active transport. City continues to strengthen its efforts to establish and maintain a tree canopy over streets and pathways. Trees that provide shade on sidewalks and streets support active transport. The canopy slows vehicles, making it safer for active modes to share the space. They also provide shade that makes active modes more comfortable. If I recall, there's a portion of the comp plan that talks about the security, you know, the safety benefits of trees in the tree lawn, and then slower traffic, more separation between the pedestrians and automobiles. And so I think that that would probably fit pretty well in that section, so I could take a look at that.
So what is, trees that provide shade on sidewalks and streets support active transport? What does that really mean? I'm reading it, trying to figure it out.
Kind of like multimodal transportation.
So why don't we just say that? Because that's, you know, I guess.
Is the term "active transport" is not the one that we've used.
I think of military movement when I read that.
Isn't there another term that's been used, was used in the multimodal study rather than active transport?
I would have to go back and.
We're talking about walking and bicycles, I think, but.
I don't read it that way if.
Can't we use, did you mean to, did we mean to think about walkability, since that's our next topic? Is that, I mean, transport isn't walkability, is it? That isn't the word we use.
Support alternative modes of transportation, or something like that.
And then the last two, you know, shade where not wanted. Cities should develop ordinances to manage conflicts regarding shade from trees where it's not warranted. Shade reduces efficiency of solar panels, passive solar heating systems. Consideration shall also be given to maximizing sun exposure for home garden spaces because locally grown food reduces economic leakage. It is valuable element of the community resilience. Procedures are needed to manage the contention between these energy systems and shade cast by trees as they grow. And then the last one's food forests. Cities should develop public sites where edible trees and polycultures allow citizens to gather food. Mitigating climate change requires reducing carbon emissions, which puts a premium on locally grown food. Urban plantings appropriately situated and managed could provide local fruits and nuts. Which is something that the Parks and Rec Commission, I believe, is currently contemplating as, what's it called, Nels? Urban, or a food park?
There's an idea for a new park.
Yeah.
An edible park?
An edible, yeah, more of an edible.
Edible landscape or whatever, yeah.
Back to the days when East City Park was a orchard.
Apple.
Yeah, yeah. The interiors of most of the blocks were too. Okay, any other?
Seems to me I remember way, way back in prehistory when the Planning and Zoning Commission was trying to put together an ordinance relative to solar access. I think we eventually kind of threw up our hands on it. Conflict between beautiful trees and any way of trying to guarantee solar access is a very, very difficult thing to deal with.
Well, if you live in Fort Russell, for the most part, you pretty much have to have a community garden space, or other areas of town that have a lot of trees. Or grow slugs, you know.
And I think that that's pretty much it.
Okay, all right. So, the last item on the agenda is shared readings. And I'll apologize in upfront for making, suggesting a fairly complex and long reading. But the reason that I felt it was important is, at one point, you recall, we were working on street classifications in the comp plan and updating what those are, several, three streets. And when we had, and we had a presentation by our Public Works Director, and it seemed like a lot of our definitions are functional classifications that are kind of one-dimensional. And I was reading this article because, you know, things like minor arterials and collector's streets are defined on vehicular count. And that, you know, and we talk about all these multimodal aspirations in our comprehensive plan. And I was taking a continuing ed course, and I thought, well, this offers a different perspective on how we look at our streets, if we're going to be working on classifying them in the comprehensive plan. And maybe we need a more expansive and inclusive classification system that considers other aspirations, including multimodal transport and walkability. And, you know, I wondered in the vehicular count, did they also count pedestrian use counts and bike activity counts? So anyway, I was thinking about these things, and then there was this article. And I was doing it as a continuing ed course, and it talked about context-sensitive solutions as a process for walkable thoroughfares and planning them. And so I guess if, for those of you who had a chance to read it, what do you, do you think that context-sensitive solutions bring, what do they bring to the community planning process? Or what can they tell us as we go through this comprehensive plan and look at the mobility chapter, et cetera, of our plan? And is there fertile ground there to draw from, I guess?
I like the context-sensitive solution idea. I struggled with how we would apply it as a commission. And I got so hung up in the transportation pieces of this that I like the idea. I'm just still struggling with how do we, as a group, apply not only the concept, like everything should be in proper context, I like that. But I kept coming back to, okay, how do we relate land use to transportation? Where does our role lie in this versus transportation? And how do we coordinate the efforts? I mean, obviously, we have the coordination that Joel does all the time, but I, my mind kept coming back to land use, and I got so hung up on that. I think that maybe I even forgot about what a context was. I mean, I think we've done a lot of that intuitively, the proper context.
Yeah, everything we've read here so far, I think Moscow is right on line with what I've read. I mean, we already have the, we already have this going. We've talked about it tonight with the trees. I think it's, I think we're right on track. And granted, I didn't read the fourth chapter, but the first, the first two were kind of like introduction of what was really going to happen. And finally, the third chapter kind of got in the meat of it.
Yeah, the third and the fourth get into it more, yeah. And I was afraid of having you dive right into the third chapter without having a book.
I started reading the first, and then I started skimming, and then I stopped again. But yeah, it's, I think we're right on track. I mean, we're taking everything into consideration. That's pretty much what they do. Yeah.
I guess that my reaction was that, at least in the third chapter, they were trying to formalize the, how one approaches it.
The process.
The process, and I got so bogged down with the process, which appeared to me to be more complicated than what we truly need here.
Well, yeah, like you said, we're already doing it intuitively.
We're doing it intuitively.
And they're just trying to tell you how to do it intuitively. We've already kind of, that's what I think about it so far.
Well, in our comp plan process with, in the mobility chapter with the reclassification, we talked about having accompanying corridor studies, you know, as part of that process. And so what does that really mean, you know? And so I think that chapters three and four offer a way of looking at the whole network, the corridor itself, the corridor, a corridor which encompasses land uses along it. That's what's different than just street planning, you know, it encompasses the, well, really, what neighborhoods are you going through and what's their character? And then down to the level of thoroughfare, so it's kind of all three. And it seemed like the same process was used for all three, just at a different scale, whether it was planning or design. And so what I did is I went through and I looked at the process, I sort of tried to distill the process that they recommend. And then I tried to distill the process that was used out here, you know, to see if, where we could do a better job, or whether we're doing the right thing, or, you know, what are the differences? And it seems like one of the first things is, in the CSS approach, is having a corridor vision or a thoroughfare vision. And having a lot of stakeholder involvement to reflect the goals of the community, rather than just the transportation functions of the corridor. And that's where I think we're a little limited, maybe, in our processes. We tend to look at vehicle counts sometimes without. But Joel could help us on that. But just going through what their process is, and then identifying what the needs are for a particular project. And making sure that it's the needs of all users, not just people who live east who want to go west, or people who live in the center who don't want the east coming through the west. I mean, how do you mitigate all of those conflicts and start to look at, or somebody just doesn't own a car and walks everywhere, or somebody needs transit, et cetera? So looking at project needs, and then, so they do that, and then they develop alternatives. And all of this is sort of participatory, you know, it involves a broad spectrum of the community. Not just a commission or a public works department, or an occasional liaison going back and forth between planning and zoning. And I feel like we're maybe a little shy on that inclusiveness in our process. And then developing alternatives, and then evaluating alternatives, and developing criteria to evaluate the alternatives based on. to evaluate the alternatives based on, and what are the impacts and the trade-offs? So that, I got that message from each level that they talked about in three and four, whether it was networks, corridors or thoroughfare planning, it was kind of like that's what the process was. Then I went, oh, and then, you know, like evaluation criteria might be something like mobility for all users, the social and economic effects, cultural, you know, we have historic preservation in some of our neighborhoods, neighborhood integrity, environmental impacts if there are some, cost effectiveness, you know, so it's sort of hitting all those sectors. And by having criteria to evaluate systematically all of those sectors, when you're looking at a choice, then you can select a preferred alternative that starts to balance those things. And so, it seems to me that it's pretty systematic and I don't feel like our process is quite as systematic. So, in looking, I don't want to go into a monologue, but I'm trying to outline, so if anybody wants to say anything, please feel free. But that's what I got from it in terms of what the process is. And then, when I looked at the Third Street corridor process, well, you saw me get upset last month because I didn't know anything about it, you know, it was like a one-month, four-and-a-half week thing that Joel happened to be overseas and we didn't know anything about it and it was happening. And so, it happened really fast and that part was a problem for me, but it caught me by surprise. But then, you know, and so then I asked, I thought Victoria had gone to the meetings and I thought, oh, you can help me see what the process was because I don't know what it was. Well, it turned out that wasn't the right, or Victoria hadn't gone to all the meetings. And so, they outlined it right out there on the boards. I mean, you can see what the process is. And it's, and the vision statement is, it's always been an objective to build a bridge, you know, and that's the vision. Well, where did that come from and why? I mean, it's not saying, don't do the bridge, but having a little more context around and a little more fleshed out vision would be, in my opinion, be helpful. And then, then a transportation commission, the Transportation Commission formed a subcommittee of 10 members, kind of in various sectors, three from the Transportation Commission, four from, do you know where the four from the community, how they were selected? Was it just at large kind of?
I don't know.
It was chosen from people who contacted the mayor and he just felt like he wanted to have sort of a balanced political perspective to, for to against.
And then, city council liaison, who's that?
The city council.
Catherine Bonzo.
Okay, and then tech advisor, was that Mike Lowry? Yeah, and then city staff liaison. So, they, so there was that. And then there, then the subcommittee was formed and it met eight times in four and a half weeks, which is a really compressed timeframe for a kind of fairly large public expenditure. And then, they identified areas of interest, which I guess to some extent would be the criteria you would use to evaluate alternatives. But they identified areas of interest, including safety, multimodal access, limiting impacts and speeds. And so, those were the kind of, and then they generated alternatives. I'm not, do you know what the process was to generate alternatives? You know?
A, B, A, B and C.
It was like, what did they do? Did they have a charrette or did they have a consultant or how did they come about?
I think it came out of the committee.
I only attended a couple of the meetings and I would just say, I don't know how the selections were made. There were two people from the Concerned Citizens Group, the Third Street Group. The consultant at, Mike Lowry from the university, just my observation, was really good. He really is a bright young fellow.
Well, he's an avid bicyclist.
And he seemed to not only have a good background in transportation, but he was...
He was part of the bioregional planning program.
He really drove most of the conversation. I would say that, given the trauma that we've had over the last 15 years on the bridge, a number of people on the group were not sure how to, how to speak. It was, I think there's clearly some, the friction out there is palpable. And Mike Lowry seemed to be unaffected by that. He was really good. And I just, those are the two meetings that I went to, but I decided as a citizen, I wasn't going to have anything to say. And so, I just decided to stay home. They were having some good discussions.
So, then they generated alternatives and reported those to the Transportation Commission, right? And presented them last month, yeah. And then they set up for public input, which is what we see. So there are a lot of parts of the process that seem to work really well. I mean, I'm not trying to throw it out with the bathwater. I was just thinking as we look at process in our comprehensive planning for, you know, in the future, what can we do better? Is there, you know, are there things we can do better? So, and then they set up this display for public comment and you can, and the open houses. And I'm not sure where the process goes from there because, does anybody know?
Well, Les was clear as the meeting started, that the bridge is coming down the pike. I mean, the horse is out of the barn and we've got to try not to get run over by it. So that's why it's so fast because he was pretty, it seemed to me, he was very, he stated that right up front, that we don't have any time, that it'll be soon that we'll be hiring somebody for the bridge.
So that's why the whole thing was so compressed.
And so that's why it was compressed.
I believe there was also some, a grant that was being applied for relative to some of the improvements along the length of Third Street, which also had a short timeline on it. I think that was what was compressing the timeline.
Yeah, I was curious about that. But anyway, that's, I think that, and then, so then we're down to the citizen level or the commission level of looking at the alternatives. And my problem looking at them is I don't have any criteria to measure against, to evaluate them systematically. And I think that's needed, you know? If it's this inclusive committee that supposedly took, you know, tried to reach consensus, what values did came out of that? You know, it's not stated anywhere really. So it's like, okay, well, I can say I can see problems with this on this alternative or problems with that, but to systematically sort of evaluate them, it seems like that's an element that's missing. And I don't know if that's forthcoming or maybe, you know, where all this public input goes from here, I don't know.
I, it was my understanding that the public input at some point goes to the Transportation Commission.
Then you go through all the comments.
Decide what to do with it.
Anyway, so, I mean, just from a person wanting to participate and evaluate, that's, I probably am going to have to make my own, based on those four things I mentioned, the mobility of all users, the social and economic effects, yadda, yadda, you know, looking at some of that. And, you know, it's really just kind of a great, it's just the timing of it all with the shared reading was like, here's this process that's being laid out in this reading and here we have this ongoing community process, what works in what we're doing and what maybe could be improved. And that's really the question that I would, you know, for future circumstances, because we have two more corridors that someday they're going to, we need quarter plans. Plus, this is only, they're only looking at one segment of this pretty long corridor because it becomes the Pullman Highway. So, the next segment I saw in the paper is already...
You don't get to look at the Pullman Highway with any clarity because the state is in charge of that.
Well, but I mean, in the paper the other day where they were talking about the segment, what, between Jackson and a couple of blocks to the west?
Llewellyn and Welland.
Yeah, yeah.
It's between Llewellyn and Welland. And they've already, they haven't dialed work, but they, phase one was Jackson to, I don't know, Asbury or Almond, and then it's picking up from there to go to Llewellyn.
Okay. So, it's being thought about in segments, in a sense, yeah. I mean, where it can, you're right, once it becomes a state highway, you're sort of, like, okay, do what we can.
Different, I guess, I mean, we only really have, at this point, three streets in town that are sort of discussable. Most of our neighborhoods in Moscow are sort of isolated. Your neighborhood over in the, I'm going to call it the Comstock or the, that whole area, you have to be a pathfinder to even find it, the neighborhood. So, our neighborhoods are really in great shape as far, the only neighborhood that's under duress is basically the oldest neighborhood in the middle of town where three streets go through it. And that's going to be the discussion in the next two years. Those are Sixth, Third and India are going to continue to, and once the bridge is in, in some ways, you'd like to say there'd be equality. I don't believe that myself because only one street has 17,000 cars at one end of it. The other streets are either dead end or run through the university where the university can basically stop you, as you know, if you want to drive through the university at, between classes. You can just sit there for 10 or 12 minutes as the kids walk by, which is, I think, right and proper. We've had that discussion years ago about what to do about Six. How could we get Six to be rapid transit? And you just can't have it that way. So anyway, we have these three things and this is an anomaly, it seems to me. Once this, once the decision was made to go ahead and build the bridge, I don't, this kind of discussion won't happen again. It'll be more systematic as you're dreaming for. But, you know, when you have the outcome of research had already been made, so this is just a, this is something else. So it's a kind of a strange thing to have the bridge, say, okay, here we're going to have the bridge and it's going to help people zoom across town, but now let's see if we can figure out how to slow down that zoom across town. And as an example, we've been talking about four-way stop on Hayes for quite a long time. Now they're, it's out here, it's on the table, a four-way stop. And plateaus and various kinds of slowing down things. So, in some ways, what it's, if, you know, if you look at it in an unusual way, you spend a million bucks on a bridge to get the work faster and then you spend another $400,000 on the street to make sure that you don't get there faster. So it's, I think there's a little bit of a...
Well, some of it, the problem is in the functional, I mean, you know, you go back to the context-sensitive design approach, which actually the state of Washington and the Washington Department of Transportation has adopted, the way I found it. And I think that they, it's a more all-encompassing view and the functional definition is expanded of what a street should be. It shouldn't just carry capacity, you know? And the, and so, if, you know, like on, I guess I would refer to page 52, Table 4.2, the thoroughfare types of descriptions, they're much more enriched than the way we look at our streets. I mean, we have minor arterial, arterial streets and collectors. I mean, that's pretty shallow. I guess that's what really attracted me to this article is how do we, how do we look at a more holistic street that doesn't just encourage people to shoot across town? That, you know, it's, it has more responsibilities than that. And that's, I don't, maybe it's simplistic.
All of the A, B and C out here are...
They make attempts to do that.
Make attempts to do that. And as Les has said, and I don't disagree with this, I disagree with the idea of naming it, I think the difference between collector and arterial is something that I disagree with. But in our town, for the same reasons I was mentioning earlier, this little bucolic place is, we don't have, the highway is out here, yes, but we don't have arterials. We don't have the things that Portland and Seattle, where people that made this document are from, where you've got 30,000 cars versus other kinds of cars. We don't have that kind of contrast. And I think Les is correct in, that's why some of us stay here, I suppose.
Wendy?
Yes?
You know, it occurred to me, I kind of got hung up a little bit on what you were talking about, the coordination issues. And I was wondering, just now, if this wouldn't be a case study that could result in us finding ways that we do coordinate these kinds of planning efforts better? Because what, other than the fact that we had Les come in and give us a presentation, we did have to make a decision for the comprehensive plan. But what is Planning and Zoning's involvement then in this process?
Well, I guess I would argue that transportation and planning and zoning are, should be pretty integrally involved. Probably more than any other aspect.
I agree.
I mean, one drives the other and the other drives, I mean, they drive each other, literally.
But it seems like, I mean, I know we have our representative there, but I wonder somehow if we can't find a way to have that better coordination, collaboration?
Well, would like, I mean, what happens? I mean, in terms of, is there room in Transportation Commission for a regular report of what we're doing? We've talked in the past about having joint meetings, but it's harder to get people to do that. So, I'm open to suggestions because I think it's critically important and I, you know, I've been chair now for two years and I had no idea that one of my responsibilities was supposed to be a liaison to transportation. And I think it's always been because Joel has been the de facto kind of ex officio, double duty role. So maybe the only time it becomes necessary really is if you know you're not going to be going to one meeting or another, you could let us know and we could...
Okay.
Yeah, but, I mean, that would be one thing that would help. But should we bring regular reports back and forth? Would that help? Or is that just not enough? What do you think?
We do, we do have regular reports.
I mean, the other way, maybe the other way.
I think we've got to find a way to coordinate this because I, conceptually, I'm agreeing with what you're talking about, like that...
It's a problem we need to fix.
Or does the transportation planning and the planning and zoning planning and just overall planning, where do you merge those two? So, when I was suggesting that maybe this is a case study is, maybe you take this and find ways that then there, we could have coordinated some of the process. And then you start incorporating this context-sensitive and see if that works. I can't say for sure right now that it's the ideal way. Does it work? I always struggle with...
Do you think Transportation and P and Z are on the same page?
Well, I don't know.
Let's ask.
I think we're on some very similar pages, at least. I guess, out of the whole Third Street issue, the thing that I keep struggling with is the question of exactly what the zoning consequences might be of what we're doing. You know, we're talking about transportation issues, yes. We're talking, that's what we've been talking about here. We're talking, that's what we've been talking about here the last 15 minutes. What are the zoning consequences? And what are...
That's exactly right. And as I read through, and I, I went through all eight or nine or 10 chapters.
Oh, good for you.
All 131 pages.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
But, but there was occasionally land use mentioned, but what you just described was exactly what came, came back into my, okay, so transportation planning, but what, what are the zoning implications? Or should, are we...
Well, see, and I, I have a feeling that new urbanism has an influence on this whole thing. I mean, with later, and they don't look at zoning so much as form-based codes. So they look at the sort of physical form of, of what's built, or what you wanna build, rather than a designated land use, so...
Yeah, but we're, we're, in terms of the discussion about Third Street so far, we've been talking totally about the, you know, about either the zoning or the form or whatever of stuff between, stuff between Main Street and Mountain View.
Right, right.
Should we be concentrating more on the consequences of things that might happen beyond Mountain View?
Well, I think that's part of what needs to happen with the corridor, and, you know, one of the things they suggest in here is if you have a thoroughfare or a corridor, it often, it's in segments that respond as you get closer to the center of town.
Yeah.
And each, and the density increases, the number of access points needs to be more fluid, and then it gets more rural. And, you know, they go through that whole spectrum out to rural roads from, you know, pretty urban centers. And, you know, I was looking at that, and I would classify us, where's the chart? I just copied select pages rather than wearing my printer cartridge out, that, for example, I identified in there, they have these ratings of context zones. And I, and I think, in a way, rather than R3 or R4, that this context zone organization is more useful as you proceed along a corridor. And it goes from natural, which would probably be Moscow Mountain almost, or something, rural, then suburban, then general urban, then urban center, then urban core. Well, as Nell says, we're not exactly Manhattan, so we're not really urban core, even downtown Seattle. But we are a general urban, we do have, when you read the, the descriptions, we fit, this is Table 401.
We've got two blocks in urban.
Yeah, yeah. It, it's a mix of housing types, including attached units with a range of commercial and civic activity. I mean, we have institutional buildings and schools at the neighborhood and community scale. So that would fit, you know, generally what would describe, you know, aspects, the first five blocks of that quarter. Predominantly detached buildings, balanced between landscape and buildings, presence of pedestrians, shallow to medium front and side yard setbacks. You compare that to when you get farther east, and it's, you know, they're much shallower setbacks. Porches, fences, two to three-story, some variation, you know, of, of buildings, parks and green belts. So, I mean, you know, we have, we fit in the segment we're working on right now in, pretty well, in my opinion, into C4 and C5. When you get across Mountain View, it might go up to C3 into suburban patterns, because then you don't have the traditional grid, you have the curvilinear streets and a different, a, 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 a different, and, you know, plating configuration. So I felt this chart was pretty informative and a lot more useful than just saying, oh, we're going through R3 right now, oh, and then we're going through R4. It just, I, I guess that's what I'm pushing for, is looking at, at how you integrate community character more into decision-making and consideration of it, and balance all the different user needs and aspirations into the process.
Yeah, we're not going to be, you know, we can describe what's going on in this segment, and that's useful, and perhaps that way of describing it is useful. But we're not going to be making any decisions about access in that interval. We're not going to be making any changes of land use designation in that interval.
Right, right.
But we might beyond.
Right. And, and they do break it down into existing and, and planning for sort of greenfield or other...
And that's, that's one, one thing that I have not heard any discussion of, is what's...
What do you mean by that? Do you think, are you edging toward the thought that Third Street could become a more commercial street? Is that, is that...
No, well, I don't, I don't...
In other words?
No, I, I, I don't think it, I don't think we're gonna change that.
And I don't think it was, it was, it was a little surprise to me, too, when I went to the first couple of meetings of the Third Street group, that there was a transportation person there, but there was no P&amp;Z person there. And I thought that was a little unusual. I was just a little surprised by that, and I, because I've been smacked around a little bit in the last couple of years.
It would help if we knew about it, but we didn't even know what was going on.
Yeah, right. And so I, I went to the first meeting, and I think the, the group that did this work was chaired by the chair, isn't it, young man?
Yeah.
The transportation fellow. And, but there was no P&amp;Z, Z person there, and I thought that probably was a mistake. And, and I would have been nice to have one of you there, or one of us there, I guess I could say, at the, at the table to speak. I do think Mike Kite spoke more as a citizen. He got...
Was he on it? Was he on the committee?
He wasn't on the committee. He was just a citizen.
I, I read his article.
But he spoke more than some. And because, after all, we all know that Mike has a vast knowledge about transportation, and so it was easier for him to be listened to. But I think transfer, the big T on transportation was bigger than the P&amp;Z for planning and zoning, and, and the W for walkability, though I think the, the, the ABNC plans are really interesting. And I, I, once again, I, I think it'd be, I'd be happy to meet with anybody. We've already started, but they're pretty complicated. You know, it's a long stretch of street to try and look at it and try and get the sense of what each ABNC is, is all about, whether, which one is, is good. Is this a bicycle town? Is this a, is it a, what are the things? And you can see the, the costs and what have you, so it's, I, I'm kind of impressed with what the group did quickly, to be honest with you. I think, so it would appear to me that Les did a pretty good job of trying to come up with some things that can help people have some input.
No, I, I tend to think that some of the things that are on those plans are things that we should have done 10 years ago.
So do you think there's an opportunity in the process to then, as you gather, as the Transportation Commission gathers input, to maybe come up with a consensus plan that's maybe not A, B, or C, but elements of, you know, them? I mean, is that possibility out there, or is it really just...
I would think that's a possibility. I don't think those, I don't think the plan necessarily has to be adopted in its entirety.
Back to the article just for a minute, and, well, just that I was going back and reminding myself what it says right in the introduction, which is that, you know, sometime in the 20th century, we stopped thinking about streets having a social function and a more complex role than just moving traffic. And this is really a mechanism, an ideology to try to get back to a more holistic, sort of, look at beyond just mobility function being separated from other roles that a street also plays in, you know, in a community, and economic and social and environmental in some cases, but... And so that the functional classifications sort of trap us into really just looking at that, that sort of, sort of unilateral function rather than something that's more complex. That's really where my whole reaction started, was when we had to classify, I thought, there's gotta be more enlightened terminology than minor arterial, collector street, et cetera. We have to have higher aspirations for streets than that. And that's really what was driving my train in having you read this article, not knowing that the, their Third Street.
Okay, so Wendy, what I, what I remember, I was in the audience, I was not on P&amp;Z.
Yeah, yeah.
But when, when Les, or I was watching it on TV, whichever way that was, those arterial collectors and, I'm missing the other ones.
Well, there's the...
Local streets, local streets.
Yeah, that's, yeah.
As I recall, that's, that's a, like, a state-defined structure that, that they're using.
But, you know, Washington changed it.
Yeah.
We gotta start somewhere.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, a lot of those terms are handed down from the federal government, you know? It talks about, a lot of that structured towards metropolitan planning organizations. You know, when you have a community that's over 50,000 people, then you have to have some type of MPO that plans for growth. And a lot of the government dollars that come down that are distributed to the states and then onto the MPOs, they make, I think they make them follow this framework, and it, you know, has to do with that hierarchical, minor, you know, national highway, minor arterial, collector, and local street.
Well, I need to dig into it more deeply, but I was afraid that might be a problem until I saw that Washington and Department of Transportation, which obviously gets lots of federal funds, somehow gets around that with their, with, by incorporating context-sensitive solutions, but... So my other question for you, in follow-up to what Nell was just talking about, I mean, do we wanna look at, at this exhibit and, and put in our input as individuals, or is there a role for the commission as a whole? What do you think on that? Or what, what's your, I mean, I think most of, has, has everybody even had a chance to look at it? Yeah, so, I, I've come back three times. I mean, I think it takes a while to kind of look at the finer level of it. So I would, but what, what are your thoughts there? Should we be stewarding a vision that we'd like to see from this commission, or should we just act as individuals? What's your preference?
Can we react quick enough as a commission? Because I would, we would have to come up with a consensus in the commission, take a position. Are we able to react that quickly to what they, they need? I, I mean, I think it would be a laudable idea if we had the time to do it.
Are we from tomorrow? Is, they're doing it twice, you know, on the 11th and 18th, and so as a group...
We don't meet again.
If we didn't plan for it tonight, I don't think we, it's hard to see how that...
But we'd almost have to call a special meeting to get a group consensus so that we could take a P&amp;Z, so I, I mean, I, I would like to have been able to do that had we taken the time to, to work through it, but I...
Right. And it, yeah, and I think going back to, it would have been nice to have been involved, at least a representative. So it, it is kind of a rushed, compressed schedule, so it's, yeah. But I encourage you as individuals to look at them and provide input and, you know, see what, see what you think.
Just a, just a comment, I, if you're close to being done, I was gonna ask Ann if, I don't know if you, what background the city has, has given you, but the long discussion in planning, P&amp;Z is, there are many, many planning and zoning commissions, but the idea of whether it's a planning body or a zoning body is really a fractious struggle. And we've had this over the years, we've had it here, and so it's a big, it's a conceptual issue. And then you get planning and zoning, and then transportation over here doing, is that planning or zoning? And so those issues are something that, as a council member, it'll be good for you to, to pry into that discussion that happens in many cities. We've had moments in time...
Some cities, in fact, have separate planning and zoning commissions.
So there were moments in time here in this room that we were very close to separating planning from zoning and saying, well, the planning will be one thing and zoning is another, and transportation will be another. Could be three separate agencies rather than two, because we haven't had many, that was at a time when we were having a subdivision every month, and it was just coming down on us all.
Well, we're not growing that fast right now, so we have time to plan.
And now, in the last several years, we haven't had that situation, and we've, so we've been a lot more planning-oriented. And I think that we're a little distressed because the planning in terms of Third Street kind of got away from where we might be. And, and so that, I, I don't wanna speak for everyone here, but I think we, you can hear that we would have preferred...
Well, what can we learn from, you know? And what can we learn from it? And, and, yeah, that's...
We haven't had the discussion of breaking up P&amp;Z now for probably eight or nine years, so that has been a while since we've had it. But it's happened in other, other places. And then, is, is the word "transportation" the right word for the other group? In other words, does that mean cars with combustion engines? Or does that, how does transportation relate to walking and bicycling? And I will say that one of the, as you, if you look at this, the C plan is focused on, on a serious bicycle deal for Third Street. So it's really intriguing. So I think there's been a pretty good effort.
I would say look at it carefully and think of yourself as a bicyclist along the side of the road going uphill between bicycles coming down the hill fast and cars coming down the hill fast, and you have this little margin of safety to dwell within, and I would encourage you to look more closely at the other alternatives. That's me after...
But, but, see, that whole discussion is one that we don't have so much, and we hope transportation does. But both Sixth and Third, or Sixth and D have streets that are really almost impossible to get up and impossible to go down safely.
Especially in an ice storm.
And so Third is the only street of the three that we're gonna discuss in the next decade that is actually bike-able, if you think about it.
But it's a complex context along it, you know, that needs to, to be thought about as the street is designed, because it has three school, well, two schools and a public building, institute, center, and it goes right into downtown, which is another segment that I presume will be in, in the works, looking at that section between, or do you know, between a couple, and, and beyond to where it connects to the current plan that's underway with Asbury and Llewellyn, so...
The schematics up in the hall stop short of...
Right.
Of the state highways for a reason.
Where, where does the state highway officially begin on the, well, you mean the north-south state highways?
Right.
But, yeah. But the east-west state highway begins...
At Main, Washington.
Right, right at Washington.
Right at Washington.
Okay, I thought it was beyond that.
Washington, yeah.
Is it, doesn't it keep the name Third Street all the way around the corner to, like...
It does, until, and then it, when it curves by the furniture store, and then it becomes Pullman Highway.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
But it co-mingles there with US Highway and State Highway, so there's like 50% participation and 80% participation, or something like that, isn't it?
It's a complex corridor, that's for sure. And it seems like a complex corridor needs a complex, at least a comprehensive planning process. That's what...
Yeah, I thought this paragraph, when I was reading it, kind of struck me as what we were going through, you know, this one here. "One fundamental tension that is commonly encountered in the application of CSS principles is between the desire of local residents to emphasize character and walkability in thoroughfare design and the design..."
design, and the desire of transportation agencies to emphasize vehicle capacity or the ability to accommodate projected regional travel demand. The tension between the objectives is best addressed through consideration of the broader network and corridor in conjunction with the individual thoroughfare."
Yeah, yeah.
That's it, right here.
Yeah, that sort of summarizes the whole, but.
I have the tension running high up and down my spine. I can hardly sleep at night, so I feel it. And I think T stands for trucks. You know, the, that's a, that's a discussion that they've had, that is out here on the wall, is whether trucks should be guided to go over to the highway rather than coming on Third to.
And is the mechan, only mechanism for a truck route just honorary, that there's a sign that says truck route, and trucks can decide? Or is that mandated?
I, I'm not sure.
Well, you can have a SWAT team out there.
Is it enforceable, or is it just recommended? I was wondering that when I was looking.
Put in a few tight roundabouts.
Right, right, exactly. Yeah, exactly.
Well, thank you for indulging me, because I know it wasn't easy. I hope that there was something useful in it, but.
No, the, the tension between Planning and Zoning Commission and the Transportation Commission certainly has long roots in Moscow.
Yeah. Well, how long have you been on the Transportation Commission?
Well, I've been on it for about five years.
Oh, okay, so, so you must have just gone on it about the time I came on to the, this commission.
And I've, with my recent reappointment to this commission, I run a real good chance of meeting 40 years on the commission.
And I don't think that can beat you. I'd like to try. But being older than you, I'm not going to be able to pull that one off. I've just got to reappoint it, too.
Yeah, I know. I was looking at that. Congratulations.
Well, the rest of us are relative newbies.
Well, what I was going to say was that the, you know, the Planning and Zoning Commission predates the Transportation Commission by about 25 or 30 years.
So at some point, they decided to sort it out.
At some point, I think it basically arrived out of the Bicycle Commission.
Yeah, I remember reading the history recently, and it, it definitely expanded its scope beyond what originally was.
It started as a bicycle committee, I guess. It became a commission, and the council gave it additional transportation responsibilities. But the, the question of exactly how those responsibilities are divided up between this commission and that commission, you know, remains ambiguous.
Well, I guess.
And will probably continue to remain ambiguous.
I think that, I think Walter might have been, he was an early chair of the.
Goes back before him, too.
It does go back before him.
Yeah.
But I think he's really been, he's, he's been such a hard worker and a, and committed to city issues that I, that's.
It was probably during Walter's tenure that it gained more.
More credibility.
General transportation responsibilities.
Anyway, as you go back, as you circulate in your tenure around to various commissions and what have you, it's an interesting thing that most of us haven't had the privilege of sitting in on enough commissions to see how they interrelate and how they can work.
But I, so in, in follow-up to what we do next, I guess I would like to suggest that we all think about ways to, to enhance communication with Transportation and Public Works, really, those arms. How do we better integrate processes for decision-making? And I don't know if that becomes a topic of a meeting with them, or whether we all just think about it for a while and bring ideas initially. But, and maybe you can bring that to the Transportation Commission as a, as a question from us, you know.
In terms of the evolution of the two commissions, the, quite obviously, Planning and Zoning has not given up its interest in Transportation issues.
I, I think they're inseparable.
Yeah.
I mean, yeah, they really are. I mean, you know, so. Maybe not to the degree of detail that you guys deal with, but definitely in terms of conceptually, it seems like.
So, to kind of get back to your, should we talk about this some more? I mean, this, this is a catalyst for some additional discussion. And when, what meetings are you not going?
I'm going to be on for a month, so I'll miss the first, the last, the last one of this month and the first one of February.
So the, so on the 28th, you'll be back, on February, you'll, you'll be back.
Yes, yes.
So let's, if I could suggest, kind of in place of shared reading, let's have this discussion.
Yeah, I agree.
On the 28th, after you get back.
Okay.
I wouldn't like to have it while you're gone.
No, I would love to participate.
But I, I think this is an opportunity to have some additional discussions, I think, and give us plenty of time to reflect on it and.
Right. So maybe people can dig up other resources that inform, you know, inform it and talk to, well, Joel can go to the Transportation Commission and ask them for their ideas, maybe, on how, and Mike, maybe you can talk to Public Works and see if there's a more sort of embedded way we can, you know, make it communication more fluid or whatever.
Have coffee with Lash on a more regular basis.
Yeah, well, yeah. I see him at the swimming pool, but it's not a good time to talk. So occasionally. Okay, well, with that, thank you, meeting adjourned.
Congratulations.
You, too. Condolences or whatever.